Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular council meeting of June 12. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. And hopefully, our firefighters and first responders are being safe tonight with all the fires that are happening. And you have your agenda before you. I'll call this to order at seven o'clock. The adoption of the agenda. Is there any? Additions?
Madam Mayor, administration has no additions.
Okay, no additions. Could I have someone move the agenda then, please? Counselor Libron, all in favor? Carried. I'd like to welcome Staff Sergeant Deveron.
Thanks. How's everyone doing tonight?
Great. Yourself?
Oh, you know what? I can't complain.
That's good.
Okay, so I won't take much of your time. I'll just hit some, some points. So for the month of May, thirty-seven percent of our workload was federal and provincial statutes. It's page two of this one there, little pie graph. Nineteen percent property crime, nine percent persons. Other criminal code and traffic. That was May. So the numbers are on the side, two hundred and twenty-five for the provincial federal statutes. Fifty-four other criminal code. The other report. See, from January to May, there's a four percent increase from last year compared to this year. Total property crime is a ten point one percent increase. And total criminal code is a thirteen point five percent increase from last year. January to May to this year, January to May. Any, any questions about the stats at all?
Any questions about the stats? What, what's your daily prisoner count or nightly?
Well, uh. May, we had four hundred and three prisoners just in May. That's the most I've ever experienced as a member. Um, right now, we're at one hundred and sixty-two for June. And a total of one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine for the year. For prisoners.
Thank you.
We had, uh, we called in some extra guards just because our guards, it was a little bit overwhelming when we had that big spike last month. Um, and it was, it was too much to, for one person to, to watch, but.
And how many extra officers did you?
I'm able to consistently get four every four days. So we've been supplementing our members with two days and two nights. Um, we have been lucky. I've been lucky enough to get some crew teams to come up. They've been doing plainclothes work. Um, so where marked officers aren't seen, they're around. They helped with some of our warrants. Uh, some of our projects, I thought that maybe, and it was, um. Uh, some liquor stores were selling alcohol to highly intoxicated people. So we're dealing with that. Um. So, and that's all fine based from the liquor commission. But yeah, we're watching stuff like that as well. So. Yeah. The enhanced shifts have started. So you'll start seeing more members in the parks and downtown areas. We're able to, to start using that members for that. Um. To-do members are going to be here in July. One of them is going to be the corporal, early July. So that's good. We are going to be losing, uh, one member. Probably end of July, but regaining one. So that's still good. And really good news is, um, we're going to gain two brand-new provincial positions for high level. So our total staffing number is going to increase by two. So. That's, that's good news. It's usually places are losing positions. I don't know who did the work. It wasn't me, but someone did the work and I'm thankful they did. So, but we got two, two positions coming. And if you don't mind, I'd like to introduce Constable Ford and Constable Metz.
Hello, welcome to High Level.
So Constable Ford's brand new. Uh, her first post is here at Constable Metz is one of, is a really good member here in town, training her show in the ropes. So. Oh, they're happy to be here.
Very good.
Thought maybe you were just coming for backup.
No, 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 no backup, but no, it's, uh. Yeah.
Good question. Have you had any complaints? Because I've had complaints about price gouging.
Uh, no one's, uh. No one's told me to complain specifically. I have heard it though, that, um. A lot of people thought there might be prices a little bit too high than normal. In some businesses, but there wasn't an official complaint. But, and my wife noticed. So.
I, I, when they called me, I told them to call the police, but I get.
Not yet, anyway. Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other questions from council? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question. I wanted to, um, just ask a little more specifics about the Centennial Park. I had a concerned citizen saying there's a lot of increase of almost criminalistic activity going on there. Um, I'm, I think you're addressing it with your community policing program that it might be monitored a little more. Uh, but these seemed quite serious from this woman. She said she's reported this to the police, do you like assaults and, uh, solicitation of narcotics to her grandson or her son, I think. Um. But that just actually also made me to, made me to think that, you know, just. You know, how we monitor and, you know, prevent this kind of thing in the first place. You guys can't be there twenty-four hours a day or, you know, bylaw can't be. Um, I should know this, but is there still a citizens on patrol? Entity in High Level? No?
I don't know if they're active anymore.
And who ran that?
Heck spores.
Okay. Is it something that the town facilitates? No, it was completely independent, but I guess they would have to, like those types of programs would have to communicate with the police, I would imagine.
Yeah, it's a partnership with like the citizens on patrol and the local detachment to make sure that. Uh, guidelines are in place.
Right.
And certain.
Safety for.
Yeah, safety.
Individuals, yeah.
How to make observations. The calls to, um, the, the, the person that talked to you about, uh. Uh, the increase of activity in the park.
Hmm.
I don't mind if she calls me directly and I'll talk to her about it.
Yeah.
A lot of the time, like really the strength. Uh, and ability to do our work comes from the community. If, if they're going to talk with us, tell us what's going on, we're going to be able to. To at least try to address that issue. I do know, um, th- there was a lot of calls to the, to the park. In May and near the beginning of June. Um, but, uh, in terms of narcotics being sold. Um, I haven't seen any calls come in. I'm not saying it's not happening.
Right.
But we haven't any information to.
And that's something like those types of items, they, they would be calling the police directly that wouldn't, you know, versus coming to the town kind of thing.
They should.
Versus other bylaw-ish type things that one would report or complain to the town maybe about, um. Things like what she's mentioning, they should just directly call the police.
Yeah, that sounds fairly serious.
Yeah.
If there's drugs being sold and.
And assault, like there, it sounded like, yeah, that sort of thing. So, okay. Well, yeah, just I wanted to address it and be able to give her, give her something and.
Also, if some people are tentative about, um, speaking directly, because when you talk to the police, we're going to have more questions. And a lot of people are, they, they're nervous about that. Crime stoppers, um, is another option to get that information. It said to delay, at least the information is provided to us and we can look into that and. It's, it's another option for, for getting this.
Okay.
Information, yeah.
Sure. I'll let her know. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Once again, welcome. Enjoy your stay here.
Thank you.
You have the approval of minutes before you. Is there any errors? Omissions? If not, could I have someone move to accept? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. The RCMP, could I have someone move for information, please? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. I sent my report. Hopefully you all had a chance to read it. If there's any questions, I will answer them. Any questions? You got.
Came today.
No, that's part of the, the CSG also works for our committee. If there aren't any questions, could I please have someone move to accept? I want to get a record to uphold. Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Uh, Committees for Council, Deputy Mayor.
Second and third, I attended the Alberta Association of Police Governance. Meeting, talking, there were a number of interesting presentations. One, and perhaps I'll forward on the staff to administration. Um, there are a number of communities that are, um. Putting together and creating a community safety and wellbeing plan for their community. Apparently in Ontario, it's mandated by the province and every community has to have one and that hasn't worked out so well, but. Um. The communities that have done it, um, have seen some, um, remarkable results. Basically, um, it boils down to, um. Focusing on youth and having activities and, um, keeping them busy and they're not in trouble. Um, but yeah, it's just, uh, it's an overall plan for the community to look at and adopt and. For us, we could probably, uh, include it in our strategic plan and, uh, I think it would be a worthwhile, um. Endeavor for the community, for sure.
I know FCSS has teen. Workshops, nights. Youth nights. So maybe that's something to build upon.
Anyway, they were talking about like thirty percent reductions, um.
What communities do?
There's been a number in Alberta that have adopted it and, um, number in Manitoba. In, in Ontario, it's, um, which is sort of where it originated. It's, every community has to have something. So it's. Almost like our, um, IDP where it's just sort of a rubber stamp thing, but the community. Taking this on and there may be some grant funding out there to, to put one of these together. So something that we may want to investigate. Okay, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Anderson.
May thirty-first, I attended the library board meeting. And on June fifth, I attended our bursary committee meeting. Uh, for bursaries for, from the town. That's all I have to report.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Lambert.
Um, on May twenty-fifth, I had a meeting with the chamber to start planning our, uh, celebrate the sun event, a shopping event starting hopefully June twenty-third. Um, and then on June fifth, I also met with the bursary committee, Counselor Welkey and Anderson. Uh, to go over the bursaries for this year. And then on June tenth, I attended the grad to present the bursaries to the, to students. Uh, Savannah Weeley and Angel Rebong. That is all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Libron.
On May thirty-first, I attended the library board meeting as well with Counselor Anderson and the June third, uh, North Star Chrysler car show. Saturday. That's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Welkey.
On June fifth, I also attended the grad bursary meeting. Uh, with the other two counselors and on June eighth, an FASD board meeting. Um, and just to note with the FASD society, uh, the AGM. Will be on the twentieth of June, which is a Tuesday, and at the FASD center. Um, looking for a lot of board members, so anybody interested in coming out. Um, also, we just recently had, uh, discussion on the access for the parking lot. And I didn't hear the outcome. The alley. Okay, that's good. So the new entrance into the FASD parking lot will be through the alley that's right adjacent to the front parking lot and you'll come in the side. So instead of coming in the front right off the street here, I think there was some utility issues, um, underneath while they're putting in the new sidewalk. So. It'll also increase the size of the parking lot, uh, for the society. So. That's all I have to report.
Madam Mayor, just elaborate on what Counselor Welkey is saying. The service connections for that facility come out through the driveway. So, and there's been over the years, several freezing issues with the wastewater and we just asked if they consider moving it. As Counselor Welkey says, this gives them considerably more parking there as well.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move committee reports, please? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Moving on to the action list. So I, I just was wondering. Um, didn't we sign the water agreement? But not the wastewater.
No, we signed the water and wastewater agreement. Um, we were just waiting for an official ceremony date, I believe.
Oh.
But we, we can call that down to that one item.
Okay. Um, the other one was, uh, the fire service agreement. Is, has there been any movement with chief and council?
Um, after, after you met with the chief, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Asils and the item was not brought up at the next council meeting. And then things kind of fell apart in the month of May. So, uh, my conversations with Jordan have been more dealing with evacuees and providing services. We'll get back on track with the administrative staff once their life settles down.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Yes.
We're just going to ask if we had any responses to the, uh, local improvement. Act on Ninety Second Street.
No, we've had sort of some offhand questions, but nothing direct and no, they'd have received it early. It'd be a little over a week now. So, but no, um. And we did strongly encourage them that if they were going to do a petition to, to contact us and ensure it was done properly, but nope, nope, nothing, nothing at all.
Okay, thank you.
Wasn't there a petition put in the package? Hmm. All right. Could I have someone move the action list, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. Upcoming events? Any questions?
Midnight opens June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth at the golf course. Um, poker alley goes the Friday, Saturday, and I think the midnight opens the Saturday, Sunday.
Thank you. Could I have someone move that, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. Monthly report to council. Where do we sit on the audit?
Madam Mayor, everything was sitting with the auditor when Jerry left for her conference. Um, we'll pick it up on Wednesday when she comes back, but my understanding is all we were waiting for was the amortization stuff. Uh, amortization calculations, which were somewhat held up because of the transfer into the asset management system. So I think they were doing their spot checks, but, um, I am assured it will be an on-time at the end of June.
I. Would like to also know. Um, how many, uh? How many cleanup orders have we had?
There, there's been seven official cleanup orders, three of which have been dealt with, uh, and then there was a few more processed today. They just haven't, the letters haven't gone out yet.
Because the grass is now up to my knees in those two properties along Hundred and Seventh Ave.
Yeah, we have a two-week period before we can deal with that officially.
So what is the fine now?
Uh, I believe, offhand, I believe it's a minimum of five hundred. Uh, Haley, do you, sorry, Director Gavin? Do you know offhand what we changed that fine to? For, sorry, if we go in and clean up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It was a minimum of two hours, I believe it was. I can't remember off the top of my head. I apologize. But I believe it was a minimum of two hours. And then if it took longer than that, it was equipment by hourly rate and labor.
Is there any other questions from council? Yes, Counselor Welkey.
Uh, Madam Mayor, a question for the CAO. Um, could we have an update on the activity in the old trailer court?
You know what? I'm going to defer that to Director Gavin.
Yes, um, so we have a temporary four-hundred-person evacuee camp being set up on the old trailer park. A development permit was issued, um, seventeenth of May or eighteenth, and it was, uh, reissued with, uh, additional conditions last week. Um, so I believe from a meeting I had last Thursday, there was a hundred and fifty people that would be, um, staying at that facility. Once it was set up and running by the end of the month. And then, of course, if there's additional evacuations during the summer, then, uh, additional residents from, uh, the Denais, our First Nation would be residing in that camp.
Um, would the, um. Residents there, would it, would it all be based on an evacuation or is it possible that that would become? Used year-round? Is there criteria specifically set out for how and when it would be used?
Uh, yeah, the development permit has been issued with an end date of November thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. However, if, uh, the applicants would like to extend, they have to, um, reapply for an extension. And then, of course, it would be based on the circumstances at the time, but all of the utilities are not being tied in. They're all above ground. So potable water, uh, water for fire, above-ground sewage as well that will be hauled out. So there's a number of, uh. A couple of other, um, I guess approvals that they require, one from the province for the sewage. Um, we need to issue a letter as well for accepting the volume of sewage at our facility. Um, but it is temporary in nature and intended not to be operating past November thirtieth of this year.
Okay, so that means that the units would be moved out when the development permit expires? Or do they stay? Okay, so.
They're being moved offsite.
Tire setup is temporary.
Yes.
Okay.
And yes, and it's being staffed, um, externally as well. Um, there's a number of different, uh, there's staff sleeping quarters there as well. Uh, and a kitchen and everything, uh, set up on site.
Madam Mayor, if I can just add to that, uh, in a conversation with, uh, EDO, uh, Asil, so the Denai Talk. They may request it stay until, uh, next spring to get through the fire season in the spring, and then they would take it off next summer if there is no evacuations. But we haven't gotten to that point yet. So we'll see where, where it goes from here.
Thank you.
If I may just add as well, um, they, they have trigger points built into their plans. So I believe it's halfway through, uh, the approval. They will be reassessing and then coming back to us at that time, um, whether to extend or not. So they do have a plan built behind, um, this whole setup as well.
So I, I think what people are wondering. Is this going to be housing people all winter long? Like, are there going to be a hundred and fifty people living there permanently? Or is it just for evacuees? What is the purpose?
At this point in time, it's just for evacuees. It's, uh, what they're looking at is what they, what hasn't, what the individuals who haven't moved back to Chateauneuf are generally the elderly and the medically fragile. And they just want to leave them here until they're sure the community is absolutely safe.
And they're in the hotels.
Uh, no, they're kind of scattered throughout the community. Some are in hotels, some are boarding with other people, some are in RVs, from what I understand.
Any other questions? Could I have? Committee reports moved, please? Or sorry, administrative reports. Counselor Libron, all in favor? Carried. Uh, now on to all business, the water truck purchase.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Director Straw will address the next two issues.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So at our committee, the whole meeting, or your committee, the whole meeting, on May fifteenth, I requested administration to look at a water tender. Slash tanker that would fit both the uses of protective services as well as operations. So what I have before you is we have, we are able to, uh, hold a chassis that was recently, uh, came up within the build. So they're going to hold it till the twenty-third. Uh, we got really lucky on finding a chassis. Right now, it's, it's pretty hard. So we had found a chassis that would work for this truck and then we reached out to a couple of tank manufacturers. Uh, the one listed, Wabash, was the one that was, uh. Uh, more than likely to be able to deliver in a quicker date. So within that, what we came up with was a tandem truck that was able to hold forty-three hundred, uh, US gallons or sixteen thousand liters of water. The truck would have a high-vol dump requiring the quick dump as well as a high-vol fill. The pump would be a four, four-inch pump, directly mounted into the hydraulics. So at capacity, it could draft from a diggo, fill in four minutes, equivalent to what you'd be able to fill out of a hydrant, maybe a tad slower. Uh, the pump would also come with a couple of side ports on the truck, so the truck could. If you need it for a fire service, uh, on the bumper, there'd be two fat nozzles, they call them. They're below the bumper and those are, uh, controllable. So you can wash the curbs, cutters, as well as turn it right towards a ditch if you needed it for fire service. So. Uh, we added camera, standard lighting package, white aluminum tank. So. Unless it gets crushed, theoretically, that tank should last, uh, at least the life of the chassis. So, and so that's what we have before you, you know, I tried to catch both worlds. So it's, you know, it can be used. On a side note, I did reach out to a couple of contractors and asked them what it would look like to. Uh, have a vehicle sitting, one of their trucks sitting all winter and/or all summer with a quick dump attached to it and they wouldn't have all the options. One of the biggest concerns they have is, uh, the truck sits and it's dedicated. And then what did they do for, I couldn't answer the question, but what would they do for a twenty-four-hour on-call? How would that look? Would they be compensated for the vehicle to sit inside all winter? So. You know, it was, it was mentioned to work with our partners. I thought that's what it meant, but never got any confirmed yays or nays. So, and that's, that's the biggest reason. Uh, one of the, uh, by. By having the truck in operations, we have staff on twenty-four hours a day. Seven days a week as part of our on-call recruitment for the wastewater and they're all capable of driving that unit. So it is something to consider. So any thoughts or questions on this unit? Uh, like I said, we did put it together pretty quickly, but I think it'll, it will cover both uses very well.
Deputy Mayor.
So if the manufacturer's having a problem getting tires, can, have, we got eight tires that we can put on this when it gets here or?
It comes with tires, so.
It comes with ten steering tires that are going to be useless here in the winter.
Yeah.
So for drive tires, I would imagine. So for drive tires, I would imagine if there is a shortage that, if this is approved, that probably be prudent to order eight tires for the back, the steering tires can be used on anything, right? But the steering tires are not gonna be much use in the winter here.
Yeah, so as with our Hydrovac, it was the same company supplying it. This was just the initial estimate out the door, and we haven't fine tuned the actual sale. I didn't wanna spend a lot of their time uh finalizing the little bits, but normally we spec it with Michelin winter tires.
It says chassis is coming with Michelin X-E2 steering tires on the drives due to the tire constraints at the plant.
Yeah, that's factory tires, so any other tires, we have to work with the dealer to get them on locally.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what the factory supplies. A lot of people don't want Michelin for some reason, so it was the same with our Peterbilt Hydrovac. We had to specify tire change, then the dealer did that for us. Those are some of the finer details we'll have to work out if we proceed with it, but definitely we need good grippy winter tires. And it'll even have chains.
Any other questions? One question I had, and I don't know anything about tires, but I would like to know if, if this is um goes forward, uh, wouldn't it be better if half of it came from general scenes? Half of it would be used for utilities and half for fire or whatever.
Madam Mayor, I threw that in as option two for some discussion, and that would be up to council to decide.
Is there any other questions from council? No? Could I have someone make a motion then? Or not?
I'm prepared. I'm prepared to move alternative number two. Half and half from the reserves. I think we've talked about this a lot, and this seems to be a very suitable um unit for our needs.
Okay, all in favor of that motion? Carried. Uh, additional funding for airside lighting.
Madam Mayor, I lost my place on that. I'll find it, but I guess I'll speak from what I know. So uh, when we initially put the funding program in a couple of years ago, I think it was just at the beginning of COVID. Uh, that was the estimates that we're able, like the amount of money we got were based on estimates at that time. Uh, so ACAP awarded us seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars towards the project. Since then, we've tendered uh the lighting material out, which was well over a year to achieve. Uh, we're just getting final delivery out on most of that package, so it's been a year getting it. And it was well more than what was estimated initially. Again, uh consultants and some of our initial est- estimates on this type of electronic stuff was way out to lunch. So where we ended up sitting after tendering, uh, we had one tender. I thought we would have got more. We actually tendered the project for two weeks. Uh, had one tender that forgot to submit his tender on time. He thought it was for the next week. So we re-tendered again, and then we only got one tender, and that was a local contractor. Now, looking at his uh tender cost, it is reasonable, you know, the work that has to be done. It's a significant amount of installation out there, so I don't have issue with the tender values. Uh, the biggest overage for us was the lighting package, and of course, engineering's always uh unexpected. So we're sitting at a project shortfall right now of a hundred and forty-eight thousand to complete that project with uh seven hundred and forty-five thousand of funding applied to it. Uh, after discussion with the part supplier and the consultant doing the job, I asked him to create a list of critical components in order to keep that airfield running twenty-four hours a day, uh especially when you have a delay on some parts up to a year. So in order to achieve that, he created a list, and that list is sitting around forty-nine thousand dollars for spare parts to have on the shelf. There is possibilities of hitting runway lights and things failing, so, you know, I think it's very important we include those as, as the overages. So what the uh overall budget is, is we expect a shortfall of approximately a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Uh, I didn't write any contingency in at that point. I think our construction is uh gonna be pretty well on, on cost. Uh, I am working with the contractor in order to mitigate potential extras by supplying uh labor from the airport towards the project to offset some of those extra costs and installation, so I don't think we need to over. So the two hundred thousand dollars we're requesting is just to move the town hall generator to twenty-twenty-four and use the allocated fund from MSI this year to complete the program, and that'll give us a, a very small contingency, but we'll get the project completed. Uh, we are fully ready to proceed. Uh, we've met all the Transport Canada's regulations and uh operations plans. That was approved today. So uh, we could have this project up and running by the end of August.
Questions? Council Welkey?
Realize my mic is still on, but I do have a question. Um, so does the, the ACAP, when they agreed to the funding, did they are they feeling that that's, that would cover the project, and then it just doesn't?
Yes, and then there's also within certain projects, there's maximums. We haven't hit the maximum on this. Uh, so for instance, when we ordered the plow, we got funding for the plow truck. They actually have a fixed maximum. I did talk to the ACAP representative, and he said we may get some, some funding back, but we wouldn't know until the project's completed. We could submit overages at the end, and if there's funds available, we may get it. Because typically, they cover these programs up to a hundred percent, and the project's already been carried over for one year in timeline because of the shortfalls and, you know, hard to get parts and stuff. So I think at the end of the project, we could request to get some of this money back, but there is no guarantees. We have to proceed with the hopes of getting some money back.
Deputy Mayor.
Um, I was also gonna ask about that, whether or not we have to make that application for the potential overage before the project is complete, because sometimes on these programs, if you do it after the fact, they say, oh, sorry, no, but they've said that we can submit afterwards?
Well, yeah, after, well, we'll request funding before the project closes, but after the majority of the work is done, because they wanna know that we've established ninety-nine or ninety-eight percent of our costs. So once we've invoiced to the maximum level and all uh invoicing and work's completed, then there's a warranty and a closure period anyways, so we will apply as soon as the invoice goes in.
And then for the backup generator, I couldn't recall whether we had built into our funding that we were taking money from this year's MSI and next year's, because we knew this isn't coming until next year anyway, so is this gonna create a shortfall in that funding, or?
No, I don't think so. What we did is we already have money allocated to the generator. We just added the additional funds for next year, so.
But it's still on order, because it was like an eighteen-month build, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's still under design right now. It's not even on order, so.
I believe there's twenty-twenty-two money going into that, and then we're allocating twenty-twenty-three. So if you give the twenty-twenty-three to this, we can move the use, we're, we're pre, pre-saying we're gonna use twenty-twenty-four for the generator.
But we can't actually use it without canceling the current generator and reapplying to MSI. So that's why we have to defer the whole project. We can't shuffle it internally. We have to apply for the project.
Just, I thought we had a generator that was sort of in the midst of being designed or built, and if we waited, that we were gonna lose all of that pricing and all of the rest. I just wanna make sure that we're not in a situation next year where the generator was an extra quarter million dollars, because we waited.
No, i- if you're, if you move the funding to twenty-twenty-four and you approve it, we still have the capital project able to continue, right, so.
Would it be better to just take the two hundred thousand from general reserves and hope we get it back from ACAP? Or to not interfere with the generator funding?
That is up to council.
No, it wouldn't be.
We know it wouldn't.
It better to take it from general. This isn't.
Original reason I ask is I know there always is a concern about reserves, but if it, you know, either way is up to council.
We're building up reserves, and now you wanna use it.
I'm just um having some experience dealing with ACAP. I am somewhat confident that we'll get the money back. I just, I don't wanna interfere with the generator program by having to cancel and reapply, and I just don't wanna put that in jeopardy.
I'm not as confident as ACAP. Um, is the forty-nine thousand a reasonable inventory to keep?
Yes.
What is it include?
Uh, there is a list, I think, in the budget. There's a whole bunch of items. So forty-nine thousand is about ten percent of the material package, give or take. And there is a variety of components, lights, like runway lighting, pots, a variety of controllers. So yes, I think it's a reasonable amount. Uh, you could easily go off-road with the plow truck and take out two lights, and that, that's a delay. Or we could have failures and warranty issues to start with. We have no spare parts within the budget.
All right, any other questions, Council Welkey?
Um, do upgrades to our airport like this fair, favorably with NAV Canada when they're evaluating which airports they wanna cut service to? Like, does, do these, do they specifically look at what type of infrastructure you have when they're evaluating? A- and was that a concern when they were evaluating ours these last couple of times? Um, that uh ma- maybe the state of our airport just wasn't up to par anyways, or how does that all work into their evaluation?
Well, I don't, I don't think the state of condition is usually weighed. It's the service provided. So we would have a state-of-the-art, fully illuminated runway. Our Pappy lights now, they're uh, they're on twenty-four hours a day. Uh, for us, energy-wise, by going to LED, we're saving a lot of energy. Uh, it's an up-to-date system, so it guarantees good service. We've changed our LPV, our approach level into high level. That was done by NAV Canada. And when NAV Canada did that approach level change, they knew we were upgrading our lights within a couple of years. So it all kind of fits hand in hand, like as a uh serviced airport, especially for commercial flights. We're a hundred percent up to par. Uh, our guidance, our navigation, our lighting, our, even our runway markers are being changed to properly lit. So as a, as a certified airport, we'll be, be right at the near top of a hundred percent service, so we can run twenty-four hours a day, provide the service needed. We have the support staff, so that would be a benefit for us when we're selling our airport as a major center, as we're, we're completely up to date, and we don't have a lot to reinvest, and we provide an excellent service. I think it would be more of a benefit than a deterrent right now.
Absolutely. Thanks.
All right, any other questions? Carrie, can I have a motion, please?
The recommendation, but that the funds come from general reserves at this point?
You have a motion? Any questions?
So that keeps our MSI as is, and we would just pay for this ourselves out of our, out of the reserves then?
That's what he's saying.
Okay.
Well, again, I can't recall on the backup generator if we were taking money out of this year's MSI and next year's MSI. If it turns out that um, that's not the case, we'll just have a surplus next year to put back into reserves, but.
Because the generator might have been two hundred thousand this year and two hundred thousand next year? And if we, and if we offset, if we did this project now, we would possibly be looking at four hundred thousand next year.
Is the generators four hundred and fifty thousand.
Perhaps we should table this until we have the correct funds. Because I, right now, am not comprehending why you think that uh it needs to come out of general, because we have a generator that's on design that hasn't been uh.
We've allocated it to MSI, so if we now reallocate, we then have to reapply to MSI. Just don't wanna interfere with that tender process, because I remember the discussion that these generators are just going up and up and up in value, and we have one that's locked in, and I don't wanna jeopardize that price.
So why would you suggest it in your report?
The only reason I suggested it, Madam Mayor, is I know the apprehensiveness to use reserves. And but uh, now listening to Boyd's reasoning, it does make sense. And I was just thinking of another concern is, I'm not sure we would be able to get funding back if we used another funding program upfront, because you can't reimburse a funding program, or you can maybe reimburse reserves. So it might be better to apply to ACAP, saying that we uh had to draw from our reserves to finish uh, finish this project. Again, there are multiple projects within the twenty-twenty-four budgeting year that are potential MSI uh available projects, so the funds could be allocated to other things that we may have planned on using from reserves, so. In hindsight, it's probably a better idea to do it this way, especially with the funding potentially to get reimbursed. I wouldn't wanna jeopardize that.
And if we were to table this, are we rushing into supply ish, like is, is time of the essence here, like with the truck?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor and Council, I actually need to sign the contract tomorrow, and I can't sign the contract without funding approval. We could wait till the next council meeting a month from now, but our start date on the contract is right away. Uh, if it wasn't for the summer program, we probably could have, I think, when's our next council meeting? Yeah, we'd be past our start date by then, so.
Josh?
I was just gonna add, I looked back at our old uh minutes, and the project for the generator was two hundred and ninety thousand, or the budget request, it was two hundred and ninety thousand, about four hundred and fifty.
You exaggerate. So two hundred and ninety is a lot different than four hundred and. I would like to table this until we have the exact information that we need. Like, we're waffling now, and we don't know what the exact funding request was. We know now. Brent?
If we table this and it jeopardizes our contract, uh, do we have to then re uh submit for a contract? Which could delay it another further two weeks, and then we're a month behind, and it doesn't get done this summer, so.
Is there still a motion open?
No, there's a motion on the table. So, uh, could you read back that motion, please?
I can, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry if it's not exact here, but I have that council moves that the town hall generator to the twenty-twenty-four MSI funding program, and council allocates two hundred thousand from MSI to complete the airside lighting project, funds to come from general reserves.
Is that your motion?
The motion would be that council allocates two hundred thousand dollars from reserves to complete the airside lighting project.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Carried. All right, uh, new business. Uh, Canada Day council participation.
Madam Mayor, Director Clark has a request of counseling.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so administration is working on Ca- or planning our Canada Day celebration. So the day will start with a staff safety meeting and a group photo in council chambers. And then there will be a pancake breakfast, followed by a color run, um, and then fun in the park, so bouncy houses, a barbecue. Bubble station, um, a basketball tournament, face painting, maybe snow cones by the fire department. Um, we are requesting that council attend the event and cook and serve hot dogs and cake for the community.
Is um. The pancake breakfast in the arena? Uh, at the park?
It most likely will be at Spirit of the North School. We're just confirming that, so um, we did reach out to Tolko, who normally does it, so.
Okay, so you're requesting council to be there to pa- do hot dogs and. And that begins at?
Eleven AM. You're also welcome to join us for the photo in the morning at eight AM here.
All right, Counts, our Deputy Mayor.
Um, yes, I'll be there to cook hot dogs. The challenge will be on with Counselor Jessman and. And help out. I just, the question I had. I know we ran out of hot dogs last year and had to go buy more. I think we went through thirty-five hundred hot dogs last year. And there's gonna be way more people in town this year. Are we increasing the amount we're planning to cook?
Yeah, we talked about that, as well as letting the stores know that we may need to. Come over and get more throughout the day, but yeah, we put four thousand down and then we'll kind of go from there, seeing. How things go with the fire situation. It was all in town.
Like a hot dog roster for a couple of days.
Yeah.
Counselor Anderson?
Um, just letting you know, I won't be able to attend. I won't be in town.
Yeah. Who goes away on Canada Day? Um. Did you?
Hi, Prisma.
Oh, Counselor Libra.
You can sign me up. I'll be there.
Counselor Lambert?
Make all attempts to be there. I don't have any plans as of yet.
And Madam Mayor, Counselor Jessman has also volunteered.
Good, because I won't be there to cook.
Is there enough room for everyone to stand around the barbecues?
We'll make sure there is.
All right. Uh, correspondence for information? Does somebody want to accept it?
I like this handwritten letter.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. And? Question period.
If may I just give it because I want, want to. I have seen very little. Of information out there. All kinds of things. And uh, the city, you know, citizen of town. Land is huge. I have to look at. Farm breeds going up. What's going to happen to me? Like Philly, all of us. Being there, maybe some information there. Like uh, I just wonder why there's not more out there to be. People are all making. Some of the stuff that.
So I really apologize for that.
I just wondering as a citizen. Like if you plan my. Uh, don't stay here or do I go somewhere else where I'm secure?
Uh, well.
I mean, ten years time, I might be going in a water.
Me too.
And I've seen people, you know, get wrapped up and all of stuff like that around town. People laying exposed outside in the grass. Seen this now.
Well.
I'm just wondering, but.
I do apologize. No, it is our fault. We should have had that information out there for the public, but this camp initially was brought in. For evacuees, as you know, the evacuees have gone home, most of them. But the camp's still not set up. Um, it is, it has a six-month lease. And it will be set up for if evacuees have to come back. Why I asked the question, will it be for all winter? Are they gonna be staying there? Because I don't know either. But. It was approved, yes. And it was approved as an evacuation so that people didn't have to stay in hotels. Yeah. Well, the evacuation center are, are, sorry, there is a camp being set up in John Door, a thousand. Person camp. And so most of the people from, from Fox Lake or that area will go home. To that facility. This camp is set up by the Denny's. And it's set up for Meander, Chate. Will she, if Bush, so it's, it's for evacuees from, from the Denny's. It's not meant to be a permanent home. Hopefully, it's not a permanent home. Yeah, and we will get some information out there. What? Pardon me?
We can definitely work with the DNA to get information out there, but uh, it's all we can do is what we have in the permits. And those are already publicly advertised.
Yeah. And, and just for your concern, we do have extra officers in town. And uh, we, we're hoping that they're doing a good job, but we also hope that there's not a lot of. Public mischief. I know it comes with people. And, and I think for the most part. You know, the people have been very good. And, you know, we always have summer people that are not up to good things. Okay. Thank you. Um. So, that's it. Could I have someone move to adjourn? Counselor Welkey? All in favor? Carried.